Welcome to the December 17, 2019 Board of Commissioners meeting. Please silence your cell phone, pagers, and other electronic devices. Agendas are located at the back of the chambers. Any speaker request forms go to Ms. Carey today at the right of the dais if you'd like to speak on any item today. At this point, we'll have a moment of silent reflection and a pledge of allegiance led by Mark Schalk.
Thank you. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and all.
Next, we'll have the review and approval of the agenda.
Motion by Drews, second by LaCroy.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Next, we'll have Ms. Joan Martin with the consent agenda.
Good morning, Commissioners. Joan Martin, Administrative Assistant in the Commission Office. The Board of Commissioners uses a consent agenda to act on non-controversial and routine items. The consent agenda is acted upon by one motion and vote of the Board. Items may be removed from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda at the request of a Board member or a citizen. The consent agenda contains the following items. Item five, minutes from the regular meeting of December 3, 2019. Item six, minutes of the special meeting on December 4, 2019. Item seven, to recognize and thank the volunteers for the month of November 2019 as submitted by Human Resources and the Fire Administration Office. And item eight, to postpone indefinitely the offer to purchase tax-deed property located at 321 South Street, Rapid City by Mr. Leonard Weimer as submitted by the Commission Office per Mr. Weimer's request.
Thank you, Ms. Joan. At this time, has anyone from the public wished to pull any items five through eight? If not, is there any Commissioner who would like to pull any items five through eight? If not...
Motion to approve the consent calendar.
Motion by Drews to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Second by LaCroy. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Next is items nine through 11. Number nine is to request to establish a 20 mile per hour speed limit in Cosmo Road District, Mr. Terry Graber and Ms. Julia Smurgwitz. They here today? If not, maybe a motion to continue?
Madam Chair.
Hold on just a sec, Ms. Joan.
Commissioners, Highway Department is requesting that we continue this item because there's a change in a federal program where, I believe it's a federal program, that they'll pay for the signage on some of these changes. So there'll be several road districts that are in townships that will be requesting some speed limit changes and other changes that will come in front of the Board. I was thinking maybe like 20 different groups that were requesting it. So if we could postpone this until they have a group of them rather than 20 different meetings...
Ms. Joan, do you have a date?
I do not have a date.
Mark, do you have an estimate of a date or is there a deadline on that that you know?
Mark Schalk, Pennington County Highway. These countywide signing and delineation project is federally funded. Right now, Ferber Engineering is doing, conducting the studies for the signing for Pennington County and all other government entities in the county except for the large cities. We anticipate that signing won't be going into place or construction of the project won't happen for about a year to a year and a half. So there is plenty of time to work this out. And the engineering company and the Highway Department would prefer that all the road districts involved, potentially 19 of them in this project, submit their wishes to Ferber Engineering to present, being presented to, reviewed, I should say, by the Highway Department and possibly the Sheriff's Department to make sure we get some consistency on requested speed limits. And some of them also need to do some legwork as far as getting authorization to sign four-service roads that are, they have under a special use permit to access their road district. Most of them, maybe, maybe none of them have the authority to sign those roads and they are wishing to do so. So we will ask for continuance on this until road districts can get their footwork put together or footwork done and their wishes reviewed by the engineering firm.
We can postpone indefinitely and then just bring it back forward when that happens. Am I okay doing that today?
Yes, the, we would hope that after review in a year or whatever it takes, we would come before the Board ourselves or Ferber Engineering would come before the Boards and present those requested speed limits to the Board in one or two packages rather than the 19 separate road districts come before you and then maybe have to come back again for further signing requests on four-service.
Thank you. I appreciate that, Mark. So it sounds like Commissioner Drews.
Mark, how many road districts do we have in Pennington County?
The Auditor's Office deals with them mostly, but I, my understanding is that there's 160-plus road districts out there. I think 42 of them have chosen to participate in the signing and delineation project.
Okay. Mark, do you know will Ferber be working also with the Sheriff's Office relative to developing some consistency and so forth?
How many, what was the question, Gary? I'm sorry.
Will Ferber Engineering be working with the Sheriff's Office also, getting their thoughts on, so we do develop some consistency on speed limits and so forth? If they're looking for, maybe some of them are just looking for signage, but I suspect that some of them are also looking for law enforcement to enforce those speed limits. And what I, what I would hate to see is that we have road districts that some have 20, some 25, some 30, 35, 40. There's got to be, if they want law enforcement to work with it, I would think there's got to be some consistency with these speed limits that are established within these road districts.
We believe you're right, Gary. There has, so far, there has shown, they have shown some consistency wishing mostly 20 and 25 mile an hour speed limits on the road districts that have submitted. But in the past, we have seen some of the road districts post 15, 10 or 15 mile an hour zones and wish that they be enforced. It's caused a lot of problems with residents in their road districts feuding amongst each other on these speed zones. Pennington County itself, we have no roads that are posted higher than, I mean, lower than 25 mile an hour except for in school zones. 15 mile an hour is typically reserved for school zones and, you know, not much else as far as areas that can be enforced. So I guess we would, we would be under those recommendations. And yes, Ferber has suggested 20 to 25 mile an hour be the lowest speed limits that they would recommend. So we're, yes, we're trying to get some consistency here. And the Sheriff's Department is going to do a little more research too on enforceability of these numbers. I guess the bottom line right now, state statute allows for road districts boards to, by resolution, instill a speed limit. There's really no numbers that go with that, but the statute says it may be enforced by all law enforcement agencies. That being the issue there, the big may, it could, it may be enforced, it may not be enforced, may be enforced sometimes, maybe not others. There's inconsistency there. So if those boards come to the Board of Commissioners and ask for resolution by the County Commission for a speed limit, then it is enforceable by county resolution. And then therefore, the Sheriff's Department would have notice of the, of the road district speed limits and they would have some, some meat there, they would have a resolution to enforce that speed limit. So I think with our discussions, that, that seems the best way to go and get some consistency and some enforcement teeth, I guess.
Any other discussion?
Madam Chair.
Mr. Lloyd.
Would, would we be better off to put, since this may be a long timeframe, would we be better off tabling this item instead of continuing it?
No, tabling is when you, you're going to bring it back off the table like in, at a meeting, Holly explained it to me. Postponed indefinitely is that they would just bring up the issue back again in a year, meaning you postpone indefinitely until they bring it back up. Make sense? Okay.
Just a question.
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Roskinick.
Mark, if we hold this up for another year, is there anything adverse that's going to happen in this road district with the 25 mile an hour opposed to the 20?
I, I'm not sure on the numbers which way that's going to go for sure. You may not want, in my opinion, strictly my opinion, you may not want to put a year's length, time length on there. There may be some road districts that come before you wanting a speed limit placed within their boundaries and within their boundaries only. You have that authority, of course, to do that. I, in my opinion, I think this item should maybe be tabled until the engineering firm and the Highway Department along with the Sheriff's Department can review what these road districts want placed in their, within their, or within this signing and delineation package.
I just don't see any, I don't see any representation from this road district here today.
Part of that might be, Commissioner Roskinick, is that they were given the information that Highway would be asking to continue until it could be presented as a group. So that is probably why they're not here.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Drews.
I would move that we indefinitely continue this request for the Cosmos Road District.
And here, postpone consideration of, a move we postpone this matter until basically...
Highway FAC and the Sheriff's Department come to...
As my motion.
Okay, yes, sir. Thank you.
Second.
That way, if someone else can, okay, it's not debatable. So all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Thank you, Lloyd, for having me look that up to make sure we're doing it right. Next, we are on item 10, items for the auditor, operating transfer to capital projects fund. Ms. Cindy.
Good morning, Commissioner Cindy Muller, Pennington County Auditor. And yes, we're asking for the approval of a operating transfer from the accumulated building fund to the capital projects fund in the amount of $2,700,000 from the assigned fund balance. This is money that a couple of years ago was basically encumbered for the JL project and some of those other projects that we have going on. We're just now to the point that we actually have to move the cash from one fund to another to accomplish paying the rest of those bills.
Thank you. So it was, basically it was already budgeted, we just, this is how we transferred into those budgets.
Yeah, where we spend the construction money from, yes.
Yes, ma'am. Do we have a motion or discussion?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner DeSanto.
Just one question. The amount that we're looking at is $2,631,978 and we're asking, and I see this optional transfer amount round up to a simple number. Wouldn't we round up to, that's 70 or $69,000 higher than what we're looking for, why don't we round up to $2,635,000 even? And that would be an even number as well.
You could certainly do that.
And that way, we don't have $61,000 floating around out there.
Okay. Is that your motion?
I would make a motion to authorize the transfer of $2,635,978, or, excuse me, $2,631,000 even.
So you'd have to do $2,632 to cover it?
Yeah. Two millions, I'm sorry. I would make a motion to transfer $2,635,000 even.
There you go. Is there a second?
Second.
Been a motion and a second? Any other discussion? Not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Thank you, Miss DeSanto. Shannon Rittberger.
Good morning. One abatement request that comes to you from my office. We made a mistake. Property owner applied for an unoccupied classification on his residence. We've got a tax parcel that's the land and I don't know if there's other buildings. And then on another tax parcel is the mobile home that he lives in. We applied it to everything except the mobile home that he lives in. It should be both parcels. This corrects that error.
Was this your mistake personally?
I guess it doesn't matter, does it?
It does. I just tease him. Is there a motion or discussion?
Madam Chair.
Mr. Roskinick.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Roskinick, second by Drews. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Item 12 is items from the Chair and Commissioner members. The 2019 Festival of Lights Parade, County Float, Frosty's Worst Nightmare. Ms. Joan, are you speaking on this today?
Just want to give ourselves a little pat on back to all the employees, Commissioners, the Highway Department. The parade, the Festival of Lights Parade was supposed to be downtown Rapid City, I believe it was December 6, and due to a blizzard and no travel advised, it was moved to a static parade at the Rushmore Mall. It should have been a great day, it was a terribly windy day, but we still were given a great award of the committee's award, I believe.
Chairman's.
The chairman's award. So we got a great award again in our second year as the chairman's award in the business category. And if you give me just a second, I'll pop a picture of it up on the, on the lights.
Thank you, Ms. Joan. Discussion, Commissioner LaCroy.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This was, the work was a collaboration of many people from all different departments that came to the Highway Department to help decorate for the parade of lights and they put a lot of time and effort into it and kids were involved, so that was really good. I have to admit, I spent two hours in line to get through the static parade. And it wasn't, and it was right at the very closing and people were leaving. I do think, you can see some of the pictures, we did have an outstanding theme and, and people worked hard to get what they had done. I wish the parade would have been, I think it was a good concept with the static, just, just wasn't executed real well. But that didn't degrade the efforts of all the people that put in the work. I was able, I wasn't able to jump out because I didn't want to stop people, take pictures of it down there, but it was a very well-presented float. I mean, it really did, and they come up with some good concepts with Frosty's Nightmare with the balloons and so forth, but I can tell you it was a lot of good teamwork and, good building of teamwork throughout the county.
Nice.
Really proud of them. Thanks for all their support.
I think it's amazing, just the name that you guys came up with and then the float I did drive by there, but the traffic was, we came in from LaCrosse Street that way and then just saw half of them and we did see this, our float, but the traffic there was horrendous. But the thought and the caring of trying to, you know, have everybody see the floats and do the right thing. I think I would have probably just let the floats stand and then have people, you know, or have the floats go around the mall and then have people just, you know, do it the opposite. But bottom line is the concept and the theory behind it was a positive. So congratulations to our team. We did a lot of hard work for it, so.
I think we need to give a special thanks to Mark and Joe for, you know, Mark, last year was the first year and he really spearheaded and opened up the shop and you actually get to find out when you talk to some of the employees about, you know, you need to keep this place clean. So, but, but Mark did, I really appreciate your effort, Mark.
Mark, would you like to come up and say a few words?
Excuse me, Mark Schalk, Pennington County Highway. I also would like to thank everyone for coming to help decorate the float. We had a nice potluck afterwards and had some good conversation. I just wanted to say, this is one of our largest pieces of snow equipment that we have on, at the Highway Department. It's actually, it's a 1992 Oshkosh truck chassis that we paid $19,500 for from surplus, federal surplus out there in Box Elder. And then we bought the snow package, the blower package, which is the power unit and the auger on the front. It's a Kodiak snow blower and power unit, a 2010, that, we bought that new in 2010 and mounted it, our crews in the Rapid City shop mounted it on the truck. So we got a total of $237,500 into this piece of equipment, which is a lot. But if we were to buy something similar, I, I don't have that number, something that was manufactured, I would expect that to be twice that much. So our mechanics did a very good job saving the county some money. We put this package together and we had a real short clip of this machine in action, but I don't, don't think we can pull it up right now. But it can really throw some snow, it can, it can throw snow a city block if the winds are right and 10 feet deep drifts, it'll eat right through there. So we might just leave those teeth on there that we decorated with, so.
Pretty awesome. You also have a new addition to your team up there from Mr. Joe Miller.
Yeah.
He had a baby boy, didn't he?
He did. He, he's on paternity leave right now. They had a baby boy, I believe it was the 1st of December.
I see, yep.
So he's home enjoying getting him settled in and helping his wife with their new, new child and we look forward to him taking a rest there and coming back anytime he can.
Well, thank you, Mark, for, for taking over the reins for him because you've worked for us a long time and we appreciate everything you do for us, Mark.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks, Mark.
Thanks, Mark.
Well, I'll tell you, if I were Frosty, I wouldn't want to be standing in front of that. Doggone chair. And I, I would have loved to have gotten down there because it looks like you guys had a blast. I got called out of town, but great job.
Nice. That was just informational. The comprehensive plan hearing reminders at 9 o'clock tomorrow morning, just a reminder of that. If anybody has any questions or comments on that. If not, let's move on to committee reports. Let's start with Lloyd today.
I guess the first one right off the top of my head was the planning commission yesterday. That went, went well. There was some discussion on a conditional use permit, not conditional use, but a plan unit development, one that came up and, and so that brought back some discussion from the group and the planning commission did very well. I think they asked some questions of how the department's going to be ran and so forth and John answered some of the questions for them, so that, otherwise it was pretty short agendas like ours today. The other one we had was, I'm sure we're going to have plenty of reports on the Central States Fair Board meeting last night, but they had their annual Christmas party, so that was a good gathering of the Board and some Commissioners that come down for their support. Right off the top, I don't have any other report, oh, the Black Hills Association of County Commissioners, we had that, what was that, Friday, Gary, the 13th? That went very well. We had a report from Barry on the mental health, a report that was given to us. And then he also was giving an update on the care campus, which in turn opened up a lot of discussion. So our meeting ended up going for like an hour and a half and there was some good, good input. One of the things the Board, the committee decided was that we were going to swap, the next meeting was supposed to be Ogala, Lakota in March and Pennington County was going to be later in May, but we swapped them around and so we'll have the March meeting in Pennington County and the May one at Ogala, Lakota and we're working on, I encouraged the, the group to, to plan for the one in Ogala so that they could maybe get tours of a wounded knee or see the Justice Center or some other type of things because a lot of, you know, these are way on the other side of the counties for these people, so it could, it could be long travel. But if you plan it, I think it'll be a good event. And so they're looking at trying to do some of that stuff on the side, so March, or, excuse me, May, kind of having in your, your calendars or in your mind that we'll have a meeting down there. They haven't quite decided whether it's going to be Hot Springs or Prairie, Prairie Edge or something along those lines, but we had a couple of bills, one from Janet Saylor that, that she presented. Gary, was there, I'm trying to think, they gave, the State Board of County Commissioners gave an update on some, of some of the bills that are going to be coming in legislative sessions. So otherwise, it was, it was a good meeting. I think we had a good turnout. I think we had about 40...
Forty-one.
Forty-one people there, so we had a good turnout. With the Black Hills Area Association of County Commissioners, we'll be doing, forming a committee to do, for, how do you word that? Just trying to think, for, for the leadership.
For next year?
Yeah.
You need to appoint a nominating committee?
Nominating committee, sorry about that. Couldn't think of that. We'll have to form a nominating committee in January for the March meeting so we can set, set the new leadership of Black Hills Area. Otherwise, I think that's the most I can, I've got to report for today.
Mark DeSanto.
Went to the library board meeting. Numbers are looking good. The air handler that they were, that they purchased, that they're going to be getting all-new air conditioning and heating in the library. The roof, the, the air handler that is currently sitting on the ground needs to go up on the roof and they're having to spend an extra $3,000 to get engineering done for roof stabilization because of the weight of the air handler that'll be going up there. They got their, they're going to have their new computer system online or website system online where when people reserve a room, it'll be on an electronic digital reader board instead of put in there with paper. And then if somebody cancels and, and the reservation changes, that reader board will be automatically changed as soon as they go into the website to change their reservation. So it's going to be kind of a neat little update in the, in the library. The care campus executive board meeting, the, was a good meeting, good turnout and good positive comments and the numbers at the care campus, of course, continue to be positive numbers and getting a lot of people in there and helping a lot of people out. And the reports, they do. Each person that goes through the care campus... Um, each person that goes through the care campus completes a, uh, basically a survey on how they felt that the operation, uh, helped them and, and how smoothly their check-in went and how easily that, that type of step went. And, uh, they're getting nothing but fours and fives out of a scale of one to five on all of their, um, surveys. So that's a good thing. We didn't pass a couple of four-wheelers that are down in the shop right now, but they should be getting fixed, um, before too long. And, uh, they're finishing up the Idolwise Road, uh, few, uh, Shaked Fuel Project. Should be done, I think, by the end of the year, February. Um, and there was some concern about the, uh, new compensation numbers that, uh, that they were looking at, the lists that talked about our new format for, for compensation. So other than that, uh, missed out on the party last night. Went to, had some business up in Newell and so couldn't get to that, but, uh, wish I had. And, uh, anyhow, that's all I have to report.
Thank you, Commissioner DeSanto. Ross Connect.
Well, it's been pretty exciting. I, uh, went to the care campus meeting with Mark and I echo his comments there. They're, uh, they're doing quite well. The only thing I see wrong with that is for what that care campus does, I think the hospital should have a bigger buy-in and hopefully that'll happen down the road for the amount of money that, uh, they're, they're saving by sending these folks to the care campus. I went to the Silver City Volunteer Fire Department Christmas Party, uh, Saturday night. And I swear I had the worst bingo cards ever printed. Everybody, everybody got fries.
I'll train you in bingo. I play a lot of bingo.
Gary and I went to the groundbreaking that, uh, Jim Scott in Hill City for the, uh, for his new six and a half acre development for obtain, uh, obtainable housing. Be somewhere between thirty-two and thirty-four, uh, twin homes and single-family homes in that one seventy-five to two fifty, uh, price range. We had our Pennington County Council aging Christmas party at the Alpine Inn that was well-attended. And it was, and as always, Alpine Inn has good food. And lastly, I've got quite a few phone calls regarding the court-appointed attorneys and the cost there. Uh, and I've been asked to do some research on, uh, some ideas how we can probably reduce that number. So, uh, in two thousand twenty, I'm gonna do a little research and, and see if, uh, these leads I have, uh, have any merit. Other than that, that's all I have.
Thank you, Commissioner. Gary Drews.
Thank you. Uh, just a, a quick add-on for Lloyd's, uh, report on the Black Hills Association of County Commissioners and officials. Uh, that will be held here in March, and I think the idea is probably to try and host it over at the care campus, uh, so that they have that opportunity to, participants have the opportunity to see, to actually see the care campus. And I would, uh, highly encourage, uh, all of the commissioners to attend those meetings. Uh, I think they're very educational. Uh, a good share of our elected officials do attend on a regular basis, uh, which I thi- which I think is good. And this, the meeting that we had on Friday, uh, in Sturgis, I thought, was, uh, was very good. Well-attended and, uh, very educational for all in, in, in attendance. Uh, last week I was also at, uh, some meetings in Pier, uh, Conservation District Annual Meeting and then the Ag Unity Group, uh, uh, met with them. Uh, as we know from last year, uh, some of our rural, uh, individuals, uh, taxpayers, uh, feel that there's, um, you know, unfair, um, uh, by the South Dakota Department of Revenue and how they base their assessment based on, uh, soil, um, tables, soil rating tables. And, uh, one of the pieces of information that came out of that is that is being, uh, apparently re-looked at. Uh, hopefully during the course of the next year, revenue will have some new numbers. And that in two thousand twenty-one, uh, hopefully the, uh, rating tables will be implemented uh, slightly different, especially for western South Dakota. Uh, no guarantee that that's gonna happen, but that's the discussion and that's the hope, uh, by the ag people, uh, also. Uh, also, Building Committee, Ron and I attended the Building Committee, the last one. And, uh, everything seems to be, uh, on track for, you know, the major, uh, portion of what's happening, uh, just like with, uh, with the supplement that we did today on the, on the budget. Uh, is the jail in that facility, uh, seems to be all working on the correct timetable. And so, uh, I think that's all I have. I did attend the, uh, County Commissioners Executive Board Meeting. Uh, they did move forward, uh, some legislation that's going to be, uh, brought before this legislative session. I do have information on that. Be more than willing to share that with, uh, each of the commission members.
Thank you, Commissioner. Uh, last night, some of us went to the, um, appreciation, uh, party last night from, for the board and the, um, meeting the fair board and the commissioners, and that was very nice. Um, all of us really appreciated. We did miss you, Mark. Um, but we've seen you many years before too, so, um, always a good time. Um, food's always great and we, we, we thank them all. Um, I think all of us did. Uh, they had ex-board members there too. That was, um, nice to see. Um, also had a Christmas party for the fire service board. We talked about some bylaws and some other things. Um, just good camaraderie for the end of year and finishing up some of their, um, areas that they needed to look at. So, um, the career in volunteer fire department are always fun. Um, and always very appreciative of this board. We gave some prizes and stuff on behalf of our board here and, and food for them, uh, for everything they do for us, so. Um, also, I went to the air quality, uh, meeting. That was my first I've ever did for air quality. Thank you, Mark. Um, actually enjoyed it a lot. The people there, we're talking about distributaries or just people that, uh, add to the air quality in Rapid City and how Pennington County ties into that and very informational. And, um, also GCC, um, which is, um, what is the cement plant, basically? Um, would like to give us a tour. I'd asked him if I could have a tour and maybe our commission could go and look and see what they do. And, uh, he said, "Not a problem. Just tell us a date." So I thought that was pretty interesting and they could fill us in on how they measure their air quality and just a bunch of other things that they do there. So I thought that was, uh, a, a good, very good meeting. Thank you, Mark. I know you were at the library board and, uh, that was a good feeling for me because I've never been to one. And then, um, for city-county meeting, um, we are going to have, uh, Gary had worked, uh, with the mayor on having a joint legislative breakfast, uh, for city and county. And then we could talk to, not just to fight everybody to the table, but just the certain, you know, bigger's not always better to try to get, um, legislative, uh, legislation that we need to, uh, pass through the city and the county through the state. Um, so Gary's working on that still with, uh, um, Polly and, uh, the mayor's office, but it looks like it's a go. Um, I thought that was a pretty, uh, nice team effort from city and county. Thank you, Gary. And then, um, also brought up the mile area around the city and the three-mile and tried to figure out how we could do a joint, um, meeting of the minds on figuring out in that area, instead of having so much of a difference of you have to go to city, you have to go to county, you have to go to city, that we find some kind of, um, basically a gray area that would work for both, um, planning departments for moving forward. Because I was in the city, it seemed like the county would, you know, you needed sidewalks and drainage areas and stuff. And, and then development, how those developments played a key role for county or city in, in causing problems for both sides, uh, without, uh, bringing both together. I think it's gonna be good for our planning department to move forward in many areas for, um, the future of two thousand twenty. That would be helpful to the city as, let alone our constituents in the county for building codes and some other stuff that I think we need to move forward on. Or at least make sure people are licensed in the county to build, um, based on the, all the complaints that we've had, so. Um, Mayor was, uh, very, and, and Ms. Laura from the city council, we really, really had a good meeting this time about team and how both sides can move together and move in the future of anything that we need to be, uh, compacted on. Basically, both sides, uh, joining together. We have done that many times in the past and it seems to work a lot better. Not just with Rapid City, but the other surrounding areas, so I think that's a positive moving forward for us. Anything else? Oh, the MPO, uh, transportation plan for city sta- state and county projects were all presented to us at the MPO meeting. And, um, there's also a special project that's gonna be moving forward. I can't say anything now, but it's gonna be huge for Pennington County. So, um, they need to get some of the rights and see if that's gonna move forward. And then if we could say it from there, um, it would be amazing, but Patsy Horton is working on that. So told her anything that she needed help with, I could help with and then, um, bring it to forth to our board and see what's moving. But if it works, I think, uh, Mr. DeSanto will be the happiest. It's something I think you've been wanting for a while. I'll talk about it later. But, um, very goo- very good meetings, um, this month. Just done some things moving forward, so. Anything else for the good of the board? All right. Next, we go into, um, vouchers.
I'd move approval of the vouchers, amount of two million nine hundred thirty-six thousand seven hundred eighty-seven dollars and forty-six cents.
Moved by Drews on the vouchers.
Second.
Second by Ross Connect. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Next is executive session. Personnel SDCL one dash twenty-five dash two dash one and contractual penance litigation for, per SDCL one dash twenty-five dash two dash three. Um, so moved by DeSanto. Let's go into executive session.
Fair enough.
Second by Drews. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Okay, Gary, a motion to come out of executive session?
Yes.
And a second by.
Second.
By DeSanto. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. First, we'll have, uh, a motion from, uh, John, if we could.
Morning, Commissioners. John Morrow, uh, Pennington County HR Director. Um, so as we work through the process of, uh, seeking and, and securing a planning director for our department, I'd like to make the motion as follows. I move to appoint Brittany Molitor as a temporary interim planning and zoning director at grade twenty-four, step three, for a bi-weekly rate of three thousand fifty-seven dollars and sixty cents, effective December first, two thousand nineteen, through the end of the second pay period in which the new department director is started in the position.
I'd make that motion.
Motion by Drews, second by DeSanto. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you, Brittany. Thank you, Brittany.
Thank you, Brittany, very much.
Move to reconsider the.
Oh, hold on. One more, one more motion on executive session, Mark.
That's correct.
I'll make a motion for the Board of Commissioners to sign a right-of-way acquisition for parcel twenty-six in the amount of thirty-one thousand seven hundred and thirty-five dollars for the Sharon Lake Road project.
Been a motion by Ross Connect. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by LaCroy. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Uh, Commissioner Ross Connect? Or Commissioner DeSanto?
Move to reconsider payment of the vouchers, uh, to remove one item from the voucher.
Is there a second?
Second.
Um, I need to abstain. Oh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. I did not have on my paper, we had a two-hundred-dollar voucher for the Price LLC. I need to abstain from that, uh, voucher, or that piece of article or whatever paper. Um, so, um, I'll probably, I don't know if I need to, I can't remember. Do I abstain from all the vouchers or just that?
You just abstain from that one.
That one.
Okay, so just so that's duly noted, can we have a motion to that effect?
Move to approve the vouchers with Haggock abstaining from the Price LLC.
Yes.
Second.
Motion by LaCroy, second by DeSanto. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Thank you for that reconsideration. We did not know that at the time. Um, next, we are going to go into Board of Adjustment. Ms. Brittany?
Move to go into Board of Adjustment.
Moved by LaCroy, second by DeSanto. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Good morning, Brittany Molitor. Item A is variance VA nineteen fifteen, a variance to section three nineteen B dash three of the Pennington County zoning ordinance to allow less than one acre lot size for a vacation home rental. Um, this, uh, request actually has to be continued to the January seventh, two thousand twenty, uh, Board of Adjustment meeting as the property owner did not send out, uh, the proper notifications to the landowners within five hundred feet. So the, this request has to be re-advertized and property owners notified for the new meeting day.
Move to continue to January seventh, two thousand twenty meeting.
Second.
Second by LaCroy. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Next, closed Board of Adjustment, please. Motion?
Don't move.
Motion by Drews.
Second.
Second by LaCroy. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
I need to grab an agenda really fast.
Here, okay. Next, we'll have Ms. Brittany for the consent agenda. Items B and C.
Sorry, I apologize. I needed to read the correct information. Uh, the Board of Commissioners uses a consent agenda to act on non-controversial and routine planning and zoning items quickly. The consent agenda is acted upon by one motion and vote of the board. Items may be removed from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda at the request of a board member or a citizen. The consent agenda for planning and zoning contains the following items. Item B is minor plat NPL nineteen forty-two for Willard Ranch. Ken Willard and Mike Willard as the representatives, approval is recommended. Item C is an agreement between Pennington County and Brett and Jackie Swanson, and approval is recommended.
Thank you. Is there anyone from the public who would wish to remove any items from the consent agenda, B and C? Not, is there any Commissioners who would like?
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Okay. Motion by Ross Connect, second by Drews. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Regular agenda items D through F. Item D, please.
Item D is plan unit development review PU zero-six-zero-seven for Rapid City MHP LLC, AKA known as the Simran Mobile Home Park. It's to review a plan unit development to allow a mobile home park in accordance with section two thirteen of the Pennington County zoning ordinance. The planning commission did recommend to continue this review until no later than the January seventh, two thousand twenty Board of Commissioners meeting. Um, staff has, um, tried incessantly, I guess, to try to get a hold of the manager and stuff for this, uh, mobile home park and has been unsuccessful. Um, there are several structures in the mobile home park that need building permits, uh, so the review has not been able to be completed by staff, so that's the reason for the continuance.
So do we have a motion to continue to January seventh, please?
No, moved.
Moved by DeSanto.
Second.
Second by Ross Connect. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Item E?
Item E is rezone and comprehensive plan amendment for Richard Aldrin to rezone one hundred and seven point two-four acres from general agriculture district to limited agriculture district and to amend the Pennington County Comprehensive Plan to change a future land use from general agriculture district to limited agriculture district. As the property stands today, it consists of two lots. One is seventy-three point four-three acres and it's currently vacant. The second lot is seventy-four point seven acres and it contains a single-family residence onsite and onsite wastewater treatment system. There is special flood hazard area on this property. This property is also located within the city of New Underwood's three-mile platting jurisdiction. And this preliminary plat was heard and approved by the New Underwood City Council on November fifth, two thousand nineteen. The surrounding zoning in the area is general agriculture district. Uh, this was routed through the energy department review process and there were no items of concern that came forward. And therefore, staff is recommending approval of rezone nineteen sixteen and comprehensive plan amendment nineteen sixteen. And the planning commission concurred.
Thank you. Motion or discussion?
Move for.
Moved by LaCroy. Second by Haggock. Discussion? Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this item? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion. All opposed, motion carries. Item F?
Item F is the first reading and public hearing of ordinance amendment OA nineteen oh two to amend section two oh five, general agriculture district and section two twelve, heavy industrial district to renumber paragraphs and reclassify aggregate mining as a conditional use, to amend section five eleven fees, to set fees regarding, regarding mining permits and to add section three twenty mining operation to regulate aggregate mining and to supersede section five oh seven B mining permits of the Pennington County zoning ordinance. The Planning Commission did recommend approval of ordinance amendment OA nineteen oh two. There were minor changes from what staff's, staff's recommendation was to the recommendation of the Planning Commission. However, staff does have a couple of additional changes that they are recommending as part of this due to some public comment that was made during the Planning Commission meeting and afterwards. And there are some wordsmithing type of information, some clarifications that staff is recommending. The first one, I guess if you wanted me to just go through the. And in this section, under proposed amendment to add section three twenty, we are recommending that we add the word aggregate mining operation for clarification.
Page one, yep. Go through, if, if you have a page number on here, just tell us that, Brittany.
Yes, that is page three of twenty-three.
Thank you. Do we have to vote on each amendment?
Easiest.
Okay. So tell me, three of twenty.
On page three of twenty-three, we are adding the word aggregate to mining operation and there is one other change here.
Three of twenty-two, you mean?
Or three of twenty-three, well, three of twenty-two, yes, because it, it goes down because we have our.
So it's three of twenty-two and it's allowed only?
We're adding the word aggregate right here.
Does everybody see where that's at?
I do not.
I do not either.
Well, on your guys', you don't have that one. You guys just have the recommended ones from the Planning Commission. So the ones that we are recommending are up on the screen in the red.
I wasn't getting that, sorry.
Sorry about that.
Okay.
Yes.
In front of the mining operation.
Yeah.
And there is one more change here. We are going to strike the word or, the words or grading permit. The reason for this is the State's Attorney's Office, Michelle Hoffman and myself have been also reviewing the section five oh seven A, which deals with construction projects. When we were reviewing that, we had made the determination that a grading permit, that grading is probably more appropriate in the subdivision regulations. So we are going to propose to remove that from that section. So under five oh seven, a stormwater permit would be the only thing that would be required. Therefore, the reason for the striking of or grading in that section. Right here.
So do we have a motion?
You want to take one on each one of those changes? I'd make the motion to add the word aggregate in the mining and eliminate the grading on page three of twenty-two.
Been a motion, is there a second?
Fair enough.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Okay, on the next page, under D definitions, under affected person, there is just some wordsmithing. So the definition would read, a person owning property residing or operating a business within one half mile of the proposed permit limit. It's just striking or owning.
I'd make the motion to strike or owning on page four twenty-two under D.
Is there a second?
Is there another one?
Yes, and then under berm, we're striking such and using similar, just for clarification.
Okay.
I'll add to that motion striking, what was that? You got such.
And.
Such.
And adding similar.
Striking such and adding similar to that motion.
Okay. And the second was?
I didn't get a second because it's second.
Second by DeSanto. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
And then again, under definitions, under habitable structure, we're just striking or and purposes of, just for clarification. So it'll read any building or structure used or intended for use on a day-to-day basis by people for residential purposes, for conducting a commercial or industrial business, or for purposes of a similar nature. It's just to get rid of the redundancy of the word purposes. And then there is one other one, undermining operation. The definition would be the extraction of a natural resource from its natural occurrences, the development of. Not really. I mean, either you extract or you don't.
Okay.
I'd make the motion on page five of twenty-two to remove the word purposes under habitual structure or habitable structure and the word development under mining operation.
Hey, is there a second?
Second.
Second by LaCroy. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries.
Okay, and then under section E, there were some changes that were, there were some wordsmithing changes, but also just for the public information for those that were going to edit the.
On seven of twenty-two, if I'm correct?
Yes, page six, under section E, mining permit process and public notice requirements.
Okay. Six of, yeah, six of twenty-two.
Yes. Just for clarification, for those that were in the Planning Commission meeting, we did add in there that the notification for hearing was also required in front of the Board of Commissioners. There was only notification requirements for the Planning Commission. So we did add for also the Board of Commission meeting under this section. And then there was some wordsmithing, the applicant assigned for the purposes of, it's just to provide a sign to inform the public of a mining application. So that was just removing some wordsmithing some extra words essentially in that section.
Okay. Is there a motion?
I'd make the motion to strike, you're going too fast there.
Oh, sorry.
The for, the purpose of, and add to, under E, mining per, permits process notifications on page six of twenty-two.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made by LaCroy, second by DeSanto. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Then again, under section three, let's see, E three, there's some wordsmithing instead of upon, or changing it to on under sections A and B. And then adding adverse versus negative impact. And that's for the application review.
I'll make the, I'll make the motion to make the changes to strike up under items number three, application review and strike the word negative under E and add adverse.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion by LaCroy, second by Drews. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
And then undermining application, striking if different from the applicant. The applicant, you know, the property owner or the operator is typically going to be the applicant. You're always going to have that information so that we just struck that from. Under number seven, or sorry, G one.
Page seven twenty-three, I would move to remove the words if different from the applicant.
Second.
Motion by Drews, second by DeSanto. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Okay, and then under section C, let me see on this page, we just struck as well as the nations and states in which the entity is, we struck that because then it was, we just added as to the states or nations in which the entity is incorporated, registered or organized. We just simplified that sentence and removed, removed unnecessary words.
Pardon me.
Okay. Is there a motion?
So move.
Moved by LaCroy.
Second.
Second by Ross Connect. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
And then under reclamation plan, we struck for use as an agriculture and just changed it to agricultural use, same thing, just striking unnecessary words. Clarification on page nine.
Move to approve the changes of use on page nine twenty-three, page nine of twenty-three.
Motion made by LaCroy. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ross Connect. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Okay, and then again, under section three C, we just removed the grading or grading permit because those will be removed from that section five oh seven.
Okay, is there a motion?
So move.
Moved by LaCroy.
Second.
Second by Drews. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Okay, and then under hours of operation, we did change that to the hours of mining operation may be restricted to address special circumstances or demonstrated problems. Change of allowed hours of operation must be noticed in writing prior to the effective date. The reason for that language change is because typically that would be under a condition. So if that condition for the hours of change, it would be that the notification for the change would be because there's already going to be a restriction in the conditions under three twenty and the original approval.
Thank you.
So that was the preface for that change.
Move for approval of items under item H.
Moved by LaCroy.
Second.
Second by DeSanto. Discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Okay, so under this section, they were calling the permit area instead of the permit limit because we defined the permit limit in this ordinance as the area of which the mining operation occurs. So we just struck area in this instance under the blasting and changed it to limit because that's what's defined in this section of the ordinance. So there's here, this area, this area.
Do you have a motion?
Is that, is there more on that page?
More on that page? Or is it just limit that you're changing on?
Just those ones? Okay, I'll, I'll make the motion to approve those changes on that page of twelve of twenty-three.
Second.
Been a motion and a second? Discussion? Not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Okay, and again, on the next page, we changed area to limit. And then the screening and berms, the screening plan appropriate to the site shall be developed. It's just wordsmithing.
That's page thirteen of twenty-three?
Yes.
Move to approve the changes.
Motion by LaCroy.
Second.
Second by Drews. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Okay, and then on this one, there was just clarification on D for the outward facing slopes that should be of safety berms. It said said berms, so we didn't know if it was all berms or safety berms. So that was just a clarification that it should be the safety berms.
Okay.
On that section.
Motion?
And then striking adjoining mining operations are not subject to the setback requirement if a shared landmine is agreed by the budding landowner. It's just repeating what was already said in the sentence prior that unless written permission is obtained from the budding landowner.
Move for approval.
Approve of the changes on this page?
Fourteen of twenty-three.
By LaCroy.
Second.
Second by Drews. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Okay, so in this section, this is a change that was approved by the Planning Commission. Before, there was a renewal of a mining permit and after discussions between staff and members of the public, we removed the renewal section because as a mining operation, most of those permits are for a very long period of time, twenty, thirty, forty years of an operation. And having to come in and renew every five years seems somewhat onerous. So instead of renewal, we put in a review process. So the review process can be as a condition of the mining permit as directed by the board or upon receipt of a substantive complaint. So under the, the complaint process, there is still an opportunity for revocation hearing. So instead of going, if they're doing what they're supposed to do, they're meeting all of their conditions. They're meeting their review staff felt and meeting and speaking with other representatives that a renewal was an onerous process and unnecessary when we had the ability upon a substantive complaint to have a revocation profit, process. So that was the biggest change in this area of the ordinance. So.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Ross Connect to approve. Is there a second?
Fair enough.
Second by Drews. Discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
And then under this, under the revocation of the mining permit, we just made it clear that it is a revocation hearing and not a public hearing. So that it's a separate hearing from the normal public hearing process because it's required under certain criteria and standard.
Okay.
Move to approve changes on page seventeen of twenty-three from public to revocation.
Notice by DeSanto.
Is that on page sixteen though?
It's sixteen.
Sixteen of twenty-three, yep. Notice by DeSanto, our motion. Second by Haddock. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Madam Chair, real quick. On our paperwork, I may have made some comments of page ten to twenty-two. Mine says twenty-two, hers are pages sixteen of twenty-three.
Right.
So I just wanted to clarify. I'm going by her.
Yep.
And then going through here, and then under the legal non-conforming use, that section did change from the previous requirements to something that the Planning Commission did approve and recommend to forward to you, which would require on the registration, that there would be a hearing in front of the Planning Commission for any legal non-conforming registrations. So then that way, it's determined there is, you know, notification of surrounding property owners that that is being determined. So that was one change under that section. And then there was one other change under that section and I'm looking for.
Did go through Planning Commission for public and.
Yes.
To make comments, okay.
Yes.
Looks like the shell was removed.
Yes, and, and require all of the following information, again, that we struck that different from the owner. And I believe there was one other section that got changed under here, I'm trying to find, that if there are existing mining permits in place, that the registration is not required. Did we have that on, what section was that, Michelle? I apologize, I'm looking for it, just so it's clear and understood for purposes of this hearing. That we added that. Oh, right here, previously issued county construction or mining permit or state mining license.
Is that the section that we added?
Oh, right here, under here. This was the sentence that was added during the Planning Commission, that excavation activities with a previously issued Pennington County mining permit are excluded from this registration requirement. So it's clear. That any entities that have obtained a previously approved mining permit, they do not have to register under this section.
Oh, there's more?
No, and then we just struck shell and then that different from the owner.
Make a motion to make the three changes on page eighteen of twenty-three.
Do we have a second? Motion by Drews.
Second.
Second by DeSanto. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
And then under three, that's the review process that, hearing in front of the Planning Commission and notification. And then there is an appeal process for the registration, the legal non-conforming use. And that they still have to meet the requirements of the general requirements of the mining operations, even if they are legal nonconforming.
Move to approve the two changes on nineteen of twenty-three.
We have two changes?
Um, those were, those were approved by the planning commission, I was just making note, um, for the public, um, of those changes. So anyone that wasn't at the planning commission meeting. And then we did make some changes under here, under ordinance violation. Um, this was very repetitive throughout the, um, ordinance, so we just made it very clear that, um, there is, you know, under enforcement, um, there is an ordinance violation if they do not comply, um, with the conditions and requirements of section three twenty.
Okay, do we need a motion on that?
Yes, please.
We have a motion?
Motion to approve. Brittany, you created a new section, is that what you did there?
It is the add, um, section two ordinance violation, and then we renumbered, um.
Okay, my fault. I'll second it.
Motion by?
Roskinet.
Roskinet, second by Drews, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
And then we changed the county may apply instead of will. Um, obviously, that's a, a decision of the board, so, um, we changed that from May. Or from will to may on that page, and that's it.
Okay, motion on that change?
So move.
Move by LaCroy.
Second.
Second by DeSanto, all in favor say aye.
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 All opposed, motion carries.
And then, um, the next portion that was recommended for approval by the planning commission was to strike the section five oh seven B, um, and just basically put that section five oh seven B is to be stricken and superseded by three twenty. Um, so section five oh seven B superseded by PZO section three twenty. That's what we'll read in the ordinance under five oh seven B. Um, and then the next, um, change, um, was in discussions and some public comment that was made during the planning commission meeting, there was some concern, um, that some of the, the costs and fees were for more conducive of a, a large, um, operation. Uh, so, um, in discussion with staff and the state's attorney's office, we were proposing that if the permit limit is less than ten acres, um, that the permit fee be five hundred dollars. Um, if it's over, uh, the permit limit exceeds ten acres, then it would be twenty-five hundred dollars. So staff is, um, proposing that, that was something that was proposed by staff and the, the planning commission for clarification.
Brit- Brittany, is this something that we've talked about on that, some of that smaller stuff?
Yes, those were comments that were made in the previous three twenty, um, hearings and then during the hearing in front of the planning commission. And then staff has been in contact with, uh, a mining operator that had some concerns with, um, some of the smaller operations.
Sure, are they okay with that?
To my knowledge, yes, um, from conversations with him today, but he is in the audience if he, um, during public comment, he could speak to that change.
So, um, do we have a motion on this?
Is there anybody that wants to talk on this?
I was gonna have the public speak on some of the changes after we're done.
So you want a motion before the public speaks?
Yes, and then we can change on it.
Okay, motion to approve.
Come up after it, we're gonna, and then if they want to change it, they can do some of those changes based on public comment, but.
All right.
Okay.
So I'll make a motion to approve that.
Okay, motion to approve.
Well, all the changes that she mentioned from the previous page to now, okay?
Yes.
Correct.
That, okay, Ron?
Yes.
Motion by Roskinect.
Second.
Second by DeSanto, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Okay.
Okay, now, if anybody hasn't filled out a speaker request, um, please fill one out. They're at the back of the dais here, and then hand it to Kara, and then she will hand it to us on anything you'd like to speak on, on this, uh, these changes on item F. Okay, so if this, uh, is pertaining to the mining ordinance today, um, I'll just start with the first ones and, and go down through them if that's okay. First, we have Robert Watts. And this is on the changes of, um, the mining first reading public hearing of ordinance amendment nineteen zero two to amend two thousand five agriculture district to heavy industrial.
Would it be all right if I distributed a couple of maps to the board?
Yes, that would be fine, sir. Brittany, this item is a public hearing ordinance change of one thing, we just changed three twenty. Is that what we were supposed to do?
Yes, this is for the ordinance amendment OA nineteen zero two.
Okay, but then we've changed the wording in the items of three twenty. The whole ordinance, right?
Correct, so in, so, um, you can approve those changes. Um, and then at the next hearing, um, those will be, the document will be, um, changed with those changes that you guys made the motion, is that correct, Michelle?
Okay, so then today, since we made those changes at a public hearing, they can not only speak on item first reading public hearing ordinance, those changes, they can speak on the changes we made of the whole book?
They can speak to the entire, uh, ordinance amendment. As you recall, three twenty was previously invalidated by the Supreme Court, so this is a wholesale new ordinance. Section three twenty is a new ordinance addressing aggregate mining, so they, they may speak on the entire ordinance amendment I'll set forth before you.
So this is, the ordinance amendment is redoing three twenty. That's what you meant by ordinance amendment, it's not just a piece of three twenty amended.
That's correct, or, ordinance nineteen oh two is three twenty in its entirety, as well as the changes to two oh five, two eleven in the fees.
Okay, for some reason, I wasn't comprehending that very well, okay, thank you, so, um, Mr. Watts, sir.
Thank you. Uh, the first map I gave you is the rapid map, which shows a general overview of the Marvin subdivision. Uh, you'll note right there where it says sixteen, that is the Bob Van Houten property of forty acres where the alleged mining is taking place. And the second map is a little more detailed flat map. My property is lot two R, and it abuts on the north side of my property, this outside of the forty acres. Um, basically, there's been a haul road constructed right on the property line about six to twelve inches away from the fence. If that road was originally intended for, uh, use for going to a house, it's unsafe. You don't put roads six inches away from a barbed wire fence.
So, Mr. Watts, um, hold on just a sec, so we, we are in the changes of a mining ordinance? And you, what you're saying is you would like to speak and the group would like to speak on what's happening with mining happening in your?
Right.
Road district. Okay, that's, if I'm correct, or that's a little bit different than what we're talking about, but we do have public comment after this.
Right.
That we can take action on that, so, right now, and, and we are gonna listen to you folks. Right now, if you have any changes on our mining ordinance in this book or this ordinance change, that's what we're speaking on right now. So, um, if you'd like to bring this up after, um,
Okay.
This ordinance change, that would be perfect, sir.
There's no dust control being conducted.
Okay, so we will, we will take this item after, um, our, our mining ordinance changes, is that okay?
And, uh.
No, sir, um, I'll have you, I'll have you speak afterwards.
I'm hard of hearing, ma'am.
That's okay, you have a representative that's gonna help you.
Bob doesn't hear very well, we're gonna discuss this after they get done with.
Okay.
The section, okay.
Thank you, Bob, very much, sir, okay. So is there anybody here that would like to speak on the mining ordinance changes? Did you wanna speak up, do a speaker request on the changes, sir, James, on the five hundred and the twenty-five hundred that we changed? Okay, thank you, sir.
Dev, point of order.
Yes.
Under, um, the, uh, public, we can't take any action.
No, but you can, we can listen and then put it on the next agenda.
There you go.
Yes, sir.
I just wanted to make sure they know that, that we can't take action at this.
Okay. So is there any changes on this ordinance that anybody would like to speak on at this point? Okay, if not, um, I think we're done with this ordinance, and we can go to public comment, am I correct? Okay?
We voted on it, yeah.
Brittany, because we made the changes, we, we voted on them, and the public at this point has.
Did they make all of the required motions to approve? I would just approve the wholesale, um, and then to hear it, when is the next? Yeah, just approve the first reading of OA nineteen oh two, um, with the requested changes, you know, as you made the motions.
Move to approve, um, the first reading of OA nineteen oh two with suggested changes made today.
Okay, move by DeSanto.
Second.
Second by Drews, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Next, we do have speaker requests, and, um, we won't take action today, but we can put it on our next agenda. And today, it'd be nice to hear in public comment what you have to say, and then if we have to bring it up and we will get with you with planning and see if we need to put it on the next agenda item for an item that needs to be considered, is that okay? Okay, first, okay, Mr. Watts. Sorry about that, Mr. Watts, I didn't understand till you held this, or handed us a map, what you were talking about.
Playing hard of hearing.
That's okay.
Uh, you all have the roadmap, which shows, uh, the Marvin subdivision. The, uh, number sixteen is the property in question. I have a finer plat map that shows adjacent properties that owned by myself on lot two R and lot four for Russ and Kathy Wiley Brown. Um, my first point is that the access road to, uh, the excavation area adjacent to my property is right next to the fence. No one builds roads next to a barbed wire fence for safety reasons. Um, makes me doubt that it was intended to be used for construction of, uh, a domicile. Um, the next point is dust control. There isn't any. After that first lizard, I have red dirt from one side of my property to the other. And the property is almost two hundred yards wide, there isn't any dust control being done. The excavations are being heaped up, and the winds run predominantly north and northwest, and it comes right across my place through Tom Cantrell's place, and the folks over there at the Wiley residence also are getting all of the dirt. There is no dust control being done. Okay, and then, my, my last point was, I bought my property almost twenty years ago. One of the first things that the realer mentioned to me was that all of these lots were covered by covenants and that I needed to understand there were things I could do and couldn't do to live with my neighbors. I read those covenants and realized that was the place I wanted to live, that people cared about their quality of life and respecting their neighbors. That suddenly has gone out the window, and I don't believe anybody has the right to do that. If the commission needs to inspect the property from my prop, from my property, you have my consent to trespass and do so. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Watts, thank you.
Thank you.
Tom Cantrell?
Hi, thank you for taking the time to listen to us today, I was, uh.
Just tell us your name.
My name's Tom Cantrell.
Thank you.
I also live at Marvin Road, I, uh, was under the impression this was a little different, uh, that we can actually be talking about his permit to excavate, since that's not happening, I'll just go ahead and state my, my views and my opinions on what he's doing up there. I was under, told that he was just moving some dirt to put in a, a shop built in some sort. When you drive by in the interstate and you see the huge, huge, huge mounds of dirt that have been dug, there's two excavators going sunup to sundown up there, haul trucks going up and down our road all day long, fuel trucks coming in daily to refuel. That's not excavating for a building, to put up a shop building. Uh, in my opinion, that's just open pit mining, going around the system and not following the permitting process. Um, again, I also bought my property because of where it's located and the fact that it's private and it's secluded, it's on a private road. I have nine grandchildren, they like to play up there, they ride their bikes on the road. This is a serious safety concern for me to have these trucks going up and down that road, it's not built to the standards that you would expect to have that kind of truck traffic. So what I'm asking the commissioners to do today is to look into this matter and, and, uh, and help us out with this, because I feel we're being taken advantage of.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you for your time.
Thanks, Tom.
Next is we have Mr.? Miss Wiley, Mark Wiley? Sorry, hopefully I'm, I'm saying that right. You have writing like me, Mr. Wiley.
I've got, uh, to make some sense to you all, I got some packets that I can distribute to you.
Okay.
So you get a better sense of what we're talking about.
And we'll hand, we'll give these to our planning director too. See if they, planning department, see if they look into it.
This land is owned by Bob Van Houten, I don't know if you're familiar with it, but that kinda gives you an idea of where it's at, where it's located. Now, we were under the impression when this was sold that it was gonna, you know, some of the material was gonna be moved, it was over a hundred cubic yards, that's why he applied for a mining permit. Well, you know, mining permit has a lot of connotations to it. You know, you can, you know, he's disturbing an area off to the right side of the property and it's, I imagine it's eight to ten to twelve feet deep, and he's pulling out jip. And he's disturbed ground on two locations, one on the east side, one on the west side, up on top of the hill, I might add. And so he's actually excavating, looking for jip to sell, and he's been selling it to the South Dakota Cement Plant. Now, this is not commercially zoned, it's not commercial property. So, uh, we're asking the commission to maybe make a site visit so you can have a better understanding of what's going on here. We have an HOA, we take care of our own road, and the road's gonna be impacted pretty substantially. And on the, on the rear end of that packet, I have a, an assessment by an individual I know, he gave me an estimate on rebuilding the road. And from what I understand, they're planning on excavating as much jip as they possibly can off that property. That turns it into a mine, and I work for a construction company, if you go in even disturbing material at Rimrock Church, we had to get a DENR permit. We also had to get a swap, an SWAPP permit for erosion control and erosion containment. This gentleman doesn't have anything like that, so. If you would, I greatly appreciate you guys looking into it. And the safety concerns I have also are the fact that we have a substandard road. They're driving up and down our road with, uh, trains, and I'm sure you're all familiar what a train is, like the big Roth trucks. We have a twelve and a half to thirteen percent grade coming down off that hill. So when you're going up, you can't see what's coming at you, and when you're going down, you can't see what's coming at you. So the likelihood of somebody getting tied up with one of those is, uh, pretty substantial. And as soon as spring comes and the road starts breaking up, that road will fall apart without that heavy truck traffic coming. The road will start to pump and it'll disseminate, so.
Madam Chair.
Pardon?
Um, this is just public comment right now.
Okay.
Sorry.
Okay, so I appreciate you guys taking a look at it, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next is Jessica Smith. Your name is Jessica.
I'm Jessica Smith, I live up on the hill. Sorry, it's just sad to see this happen. It's four generations that's lived up there. We have two major gas lines that run through there, that go into Rapid City, you have excavators driving over that. We have some historic properties to that piece also, the Deadwood stagecoach used to travel down on the bottom of the piece. So, I'm asking you guys to take an interest in this. I'm going to be contacting the historic district to see if that is, falls under their jurisdiction. It's just being destroyed, so I would love it if you guys would come out, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jessica. Next is Jerry Matson. Next is Jerry Mattson.
Good morning. Sir, your name?
Thank you, Madam Chair and commissioners. Um, my wife and I, um,
I'm your name, your name first.
No, Jerry Mattson.
Yes, sir.
Um, my wife and I were the latest ones to purchase property in Marvin Subdivision. Um, we've got the southernmost fifteen acre plot. Um, and the basis for our decision to purchase in Marvin Subdivision was to get away from the crap that's happening now. Um, we used to live in Blackhawk across from some different operations that weren't too desirable. And that was a basis for our decision to purchase a property. Um, during the purchase, we were handed a covenant. And they said, this is the covenant that goes with Marvin Subdivision, so if you're purchasing property, they gave it to us upfront and said, you must divide by these rules. It goes into public news systems, commercial operations. It doesn't say anything specifically about mining, but it does say commercial, business, and all sorts of other stuff in there that they're clearly violating. And I'm sure if they bought the property, they were given that same covenant to follow by. So what makes that any different than, uh, mineral rights? Um, I don't see it in the best eye of the public other than making somebody else's wallet fat temporarily. So I would, and I'm along with everybody else with the road. Um, yes, that is a problem, and the dust, I'm getting it too. I'm over two thousand feet away and I'm getting it. Um, so I'd appreciate if you'd take a good hard look at what's actually going on here, and see who's responsible for it. Because if they can violate, uh, a covenant upon the purchase of the property, what they did, they were given it, I know they probably were, and just throw it away and ignore it, that's not fair to the rest of us who made, based our decision to purchase property under those conditions. So I'd appreciate if you'd take a look at it very, very hard. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mattson. If it's okay, um, commissioners, I'm gonna give these names to our planning director and have her look into it, and then email us um, on, uh, what the constituents are telling us today, and then if this needs to be brought forward, or they can give us the update in the future, if that's okay with the commission, um, so we can further look into this. Okay? So I will be giving all your names to our planning director, and she will get ahold of you and, uh, then bring it forward to us and email us what needs to be happening next to make sure that, uh, um, this compliance is happening, okay? So you know that we are not just listening to you today and forgetting about you, okay? And if you need to contact Ms. Brittany, um, from the planning, if that's okay, Brittany, um, these guys can contact you just an update, or have one of your representatives be the, the major update person to send to everybody else of what's happening on this property. Okay, thank you for coming today. Next, we have, um, let's see.
Adjournment?
Adjourned. Motion to adjourn?
Remove.
Remove.
Move by DeSanto, second by LaCroy, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.